Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Azaneda. Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Pearl Otunda.
Yeah.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
And Counselor Ray Cooperrow. Ten members present, you have a call on the chairman.
Okay. First over business, public hearing. So this is the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendment to create a 40-yard Central Ave smart growth overlay district. This is specific to the Innis Development. If you're here for... Can I get a show of hands how many people want to speak on behalf of this project? Okay, alright. So there's a sign-in sheet on the podium. If we can make our way up to the podium, write your name. When you speak, please state your name and address for the record, and you have four minutes. There's a lot of...
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is John DePreez. I'm the Director of Planning and Development for the City of Chelsea. I am here to, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Department and behalf of this 40-yard district, asking that the board...
Hang on one second, John. Can we just be... It's really hard to hear. Go ahead.
Asking that the board adopt the zoning ordinance and to remind you that you also have to adopt the zoning map that was distributed tonight as part of the ordinance as well to delineate the district. The Planning Board did recommend approval of the revised 40-yard district, which was sent up to you last week after the meeting on the 26th, of which they voted to amend it. You also received a further revision last Friday that was based on comments received from the Department of Housing and Community Development that asked for two minor revisions. One was to Section F1, number of affordable housing units, where we had provided that the... For any development less than 10 units, they did not have to provide for affordable housing. We did that to be in conformance with the Inclusionary Zoning Act that you adopted, and the council said that that was fine... I'm sorry, DHCD said that was fine as long as the overall affordability of the entire district was 20%. And then the other one was on Section K4, which we made a provision, as we do for all our zoning projects, that we distributed to certain boards and to different departments, and we expect comments back within 30 days. We had included, and somewhat awkwardly worded, an opportunity for them to provide an additional 30 days. As I said, it was awkwardly worded, and it was not in conformance with DHCD's desire for a streamlined permitting, so they recommended that we delete it, and that's what we are recommending as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Oops, I think that might be a little loud. Hi, my name is Ronnie Slaman, the Project Director with Joseph J. Corcoran Company. I'll just read a couple of remarks and make this quick. Good evening, and thank you for having us tonight. Thank you to the Chelsea City Council, the Planning Board, the city administration. Your diligence and thoughtful approach to this process has been invaluable, as we've worked to refine this proposal for a successful future for all Chelsea residents. Tonight, together with our partners from the Chelsea Housing Authority and the Innis Residents Association, we again ask for your support in moving redevelopment forward. It's been an honor to work on this project with the development team at the Housing Authority and the Residents Association. We hope to continue to work together as we realize the $120 million investment into new homes for Innis residents. JJC and the development team are very proud of what we've been able to accomplish and won't let you down as we seek to exceed all of the expectations for this project. Just to kind of give some... A few details about the project. The Innis project represents $120 million of investment into Chelsea, and will deliver the most affordable housing accommodations of any residential construction project in the city. At 41% affordability, our project is nearly three times the city's threshold of 15% affordability, and double that of the 40-yard requirements for the state. We are also one of the only deeply subsidized projects going on in the city, and our project will be affordable for 99 years, which is unheard of. Redevelopment is only possible due to the state's forward-thinking housing policies that allow for smart growth development. This smart growth development offers proximity to the New Silver Line, which delivers convenient access to jobs such as those in Boston, Cambridge, and Logan Airport, helping foster economic opportunities for all our residents. We will be delivering through a two-phase construction plan, a complete replacement of 96 units of public housing with updated modern amenities to meet the needs of today's families, including washer and dryers, which I think is very important to a lot of our families. Also, more green space and play areas, daycare and retail space at the corner of Central Ave and Willow. Also, we will be adding additional affordability with 40 middle-income units and providing more housing options for all people in Chelsea with 194 new market rate units. Our mixed-income housing model allows for all people to live, work, and grow at the Innis Apartments, and also provides a sustainable resource to maintain the Innis community, with apartments for ongoing updates and programs. We have a core belief that when our neighbors do well, we all do well. Our housing model provides for a unique living experience that aims to express those values. There is urgency in this effort tonight, and tonight we hope that you vote yes for the 40-yard zoning and not miss the opportunity to take advantage of the state's resources that will allow new homes that all residents of Chelsea would be proud to call their own. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for being here today.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Melissa Booth. I'm the co-president of the Innis Residents Association at 55 Watts Street Apartment 4. We represent the 96 families who live at the Innis Estate Public Housing Development. This is the first time that the Innis families ever had a tenant council. We have been running for two years now, and we have been participating in the development plan with the Chelsea Housing Authority and the developer, JJC. It's been a long journey. It takes time and patience to make sure everyone in our community understands the redevelopment process. Throughout the process, we've had the help of our attorney from the Greater Boston Legal Services, Lauren Song, and our local tenant advocates from the Chelsea Collaborative. With a lot of weekly meetings and negotiations, we have made huge steps forward towards our dream of living in new apartments that are safe and decent for our children, the elderly, and the disabled, and for a better, safe, truly integrated, mixed-income community. As you know, the Innis residents have been living with uncertainty, wishing for an answer about whether this project will be approved and we can move forward. We hope that our community-wide effort, you will vote in favor of what appears to be our only opportunity to have decent apartments to call home. It is now up to each one of you to now make the decision that will impact 96 of the most vulnerable and low-income families of Chelsea. I'm not just talking about the tenants who live in the public housing units now. As you all know, your vote tonight will also decide whether other families will have the opportunity to have decent, safe, affordable apartments, including 40 new middle-income units to call home for the next 99 years and beyond. Please vote tonight... Please vote yes tonight, and allow me to go back to our residents with the great news that our city councils have our backs and support our right to live in safest homes and communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jean Folko. I live at 55 Watts Street, Chelsea. I am Secretary/ Clerk for the IRA. I have a daughter, and my other kid's older now, but we grew up in the projects, and I've been living in Chelsea for years. And we need, you know, a better situation, the housing is... They can fix what they can fix, but the building is really old, and we need up-to-date buildings for us to be living in. Good situations, good conditions. Right now, we have poor conditions, and you know, we really need the support from these guys tonight to support us, to make this thing happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mimi Rakatory. I live at 44 Beacon Street. I just... I am in big favor of this project, but I also want to say that I understand that parking is a big issue, but as the council, as one of the biggest and loudest voices of the city, I think to say that parking is more important than where people live and to actually discriminate... To even think about discriminating against people who would live in that building, so that... I find it hard to fathom that that's what the council wants people to think of Chelsea as. That the... You know, again, parking is an issue. We have two boards that deal with it. I think the city council should deal with larger issues, and I... That's it. I just can't believe you guys are even parking... You were talking about children, getting educated, better homes for everybody, and you guys are talking about parking. Thank you.
My name is Birch Taverna. I live at 148 Grove Street, Chelsea. I was born and raised here in this neighborhood. I am here representing the Housing Authority as Board Chair, and tonight we're talking about opportunity. Opportunity for the 96 families that currently reside there, opportunity for 40 more affordable units, and opportunity for another 197 constituents to join our city here. It's a tremendous opportunity. When you look at history, this recently saw plans for what's existing was built in... The plans were dated October 1951. Understand, the big thing at October in 1951 was Tobin Bridge. We were gating the Tobin Bridge. Think about what that represented to the city. Now we have the Silver Line and an equal opportunity to expand this again. Now, how in history can you look at that and pass up this opportunity? I just urge this council to approve the 40-yard and move forward with this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Council President. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to speak and be grateful that the state put the money in that they did and that the city, the council, town manager, put the money that they did for understanding how wonderful of a project this is for the city, the hard work, the money that the developer, housing, everybody's invested in this project, wholeheartedly, all in. And it's with great pride that the contractor that will be handling this project is a union contractor. And what that does is, that allows... It allows the carpenters' union, of which I'm a representative, to take in some apprentices from the city. People that not only are from Chelsea, but maybe even live in the housing right now, and allow them to work on this project. How great of a thing is that, to be able to build the place that you're ultimately going to live in, and then earn a nice living through your four years of apprenticeship and have a 30-year career to the point where maybe you'll make too much to even live in there? What a great way to go. What a great way to be able to progress, invest back in the city. So I'm 100% in favor of this, and hopefully the council sees fit to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Al Yoon, the Director of the Chelsea Housing Authority at 54 Locke Street. First of all, I want to thank you for having us here tonight. We're encouraged by the progress the development team has made with the guidance of your leadership, the Chelsea City Manager, Tommy Ambrosino, and the Planning Department. We're at a crucial step in the process to realize the opportunity to redevelop the Innis Apartments and deliver on the promises made to our residents of homes they can be proud to live in and raise their families. The Chelsea Housing Authority, along with Innis residents and our development partners at JJC, have hosted and attended numerous neighborhood meetings, dinner sessions, public hearings, and one-on-one conversations among those in our community and across Chelsea over the past several months. Since we last met, we continue to listen to feedback from this body and other leaders and neighbors. I believe through this process with you, we now have a solid plan for this redevelopment that will improve the lives of our residents and larger community. We all know the current funding for public housing is not sustainable and does not allow for the necessary updates and renovations our residents deserve. Chelsea has been fortunate to have this opportunity under the state's competitive partnership to enhance housing opportunities, our PHO grant, and utilize the Smart Growth Development Program to change the course of how we take care of those that need our help the most and create a new model for sustainable housing for all of our residents. I'm very proud to be here tonight and to ask for your support as we move forward, move towards new homes for our 96 public housing families and for those that would like to call the redeveloped Innis Apartments home. Thank you for your time.
My name's Alexis Burgos. I live at 61 Watts Street, and I'm also a resident. I didn't write a speech, but I just want to keep it short and simple. I'm here to support Innis Apartments and all my fellow neighbors, and I'm hoping that somewhere down the line, a miracle happens and we're able to, you know, go home and wake up, you know, tomorrow, and hopefully, you know, God touches everybody's heart here tonight, and, you know, God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Great. Good evening. My name is Juan Vega. I live at 85 Blossom Street. I think as I did last time, just for disclosure, I do work for the state, and I... One of the organizations that is under our office is one of the funders for this project. However, I am here as a lifelong Chelsea resident and as a proud member of the Chelsea Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And along with all of them, certainly come here to advocate and to ask for your vote to provide us with the 40-hour designation that we need in order for this project to move forward. I want, to reiterate a little bit of what I shared last time, to think about, I hope you've all since then have had an opportunity to talk with some of the residents that live in that area, or to talk to the Housing Authority staff, or to the developer, or have gone down to see the space for yourself and to see the deplorable conditions that these buildings are in. And as I mentioned before, you know, these are... This is a very unique opportunity. It is not every day, and it's certainly in the time that I've been on the board and in the time that I've been in Chelsea, like many of you, even from the time when I served on that side, there hasn't been an opportunity for us to be able to make right a terrible wrong that exists in our community, and it is the condition in which these families are living. We do have this opportunity, a unique opportunity, to pull together a lot of people, resources, to make such a transformational change for Chelsea, and in particular for all of these families, that we cannot let go by. We have never had this opportunity, and I don't know that we will ever... Will have this opportunity again. And I share with you a lot of the concerns, certainly, and you've expressed a lot of concerns around the parking, and I think as Mimi so eloquently said, and probably others said before, there are a lot of Chelsea residents in the various boards and commissions that share that concern, are just as committed to figuring out how to mitigate these things and how to lessen them. But it can't be that because of the parking situation, there shall not be any opportunity for these families. That can't be the answer. And I remind you also that for the Board of Commissioners, all of us are Chelsea residents, you know, with Bert, and Tony, and Dawn, and Barbara, and myself, we too are all Chelsea residents and are looking... Also looking out for the interests of our community, along with you. So again, as I think I invited last time, please join us as a partner in this really incredible opportunity to change the lives of all these families down in the Central Ave area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jaceni Alfaro. I live at 12 High Street, and I'm here today on... With my school committee hat. And I can say that I feel like I'm on family. I know all of these residents, and I know all of you guys, and I know that we are very invested in this community, and it's for that reason that I come here, because we are Mount Family, that we care about this city. If we wouldn't care about this city, we wouldn't be here on this, you know, discussion right now about, you know, what it's right to be doing on the Innis apartment. Going and knocking on all of these doors on students that I, you know, represent from that district too, it is really hurting to not see that they can live on, you know, on great conditions, because the deplorable conditions of the current unit Innis. It is time to fix those right now, and I know you guys are going to do the right thing tonight. I'm also here for the other reason that is really important, that first of all, thank you for every year you are always supporting our schools and assigning money on this side.
This is a public hearing just for Innis. We have public speaking after if you want to hold that thought.
Oh, great. So I will hold it. So put everything right now if you can vote yes for the Innis, and Richie, thank you for coming. We work really closely with the carpenters' union, and we hope that we'll get a great turnout here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Tommy Ambrosino, the City Manager, and that's... I just want to express to the council that this project has my full and unqualified support. I think board members, Bert Taverna and Juan Vega, put it best. This is an opportunity, perhaps a once-in-a-generation opportunity, to do something that will be transformational and really life-altering for 96 Public Housing Authority residents and tenants, and I don't think we should miss that opportunity. So thankfully, it doesn't take a miracle to make this happen. All it takes is a handful of votes from the City Council. Tonight is the first. It requires a vote to approve both this zoning ordinance and the map revision, and then to be followed shortly, within the next few weeks, by votes on a home rule petition and a tax increment financing plan, both of which I will be submitting to you and fully supporting as well. So I hope that the council will take advantage of this opportunity and vote in favor of tonight's requirement, which is the zoning change and the map change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
I'm Barbara Salisbury. I live at 267 Washington Avenue in Chelsea. I have lived there for 39 years. Probably some of the council members haven't been alive for 39 years, and I'm one of the commissioners of the Chelsea Housing Authority, and I also am a former state budget director. And when I moved to Chelsea, Chelsea was a joke, an absolute joke. And even worse than a joke, it had a history of corruption. And I am so proud that we have this opportunity today to be a bold leader. I know there's never enough money to do all the things that we want to do, but today we have an opportunity to take private development money, state money, to be a leader, not only to change the lives of the 96 people who are currently living in Innis and 40 additional people who will have opportunities for more affordable housing, but to be a model, a model worldwide for what can be done with such partnerships. And you may think I'm exaggerating when I say, you know, a model worldwide. This past weekend, on the front page of the business section of the New York Times, there was an article about this very model, saying that New York had a housing problem and they should do what London was doing, which is exactly this. So all of you have an opportunity, this is a historical moment, to do something, you know, unique, that can be a model. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing on the Chapter 40R for Innis Development? Going once? Going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Regular public speaking? Well, there's a bunch of other things in order. There's a couple of other communications, so we'll just go in order. There's a bunch of... We have planning board stuff, so we just... Just for the sake of time, is there any way we can have a spokesperson to speak if there is... If everyone is speaking on one topic, is there a way that we can have a spokesperson or...
We all come on different... We're on the same issue, but I think we're speaking about the same issue but in slightly different ways and from different perspectives. We're all prepared to speak, so it shouldn't take too long.
Okay. Let's do it.
Hi again. Jaceni, 12 High Street, School Committee for District 8. I'm here just to say thank you for the support that we get from the City Council on the school budget, and we are hoping that we will continue to get that support this year. And to join us tomorrow at the Chelsea Collaborative, there will be a presentation at 6:00 PM on the school budget, and you can see how this is going to impact us. But also on the 20th, there is a public hearing at the state level. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Catherine Anderson. I live at 28 Warren Ave in Somerville. I teach at the Brown Middle School. I'm the seventh and eighth grade special education liaison there, and I've been there for six years. I'm also here to speak about public funding Chelsea public schools. This year, our district is facing a budget shortfall of $2 million. It's the fourth year in a row that we've faced a significant shortfall. This year, one of the resources on the chopping block is four of 11 English language learner teachers at the middle school level, or 36% of the ELL staff. Our school departments worked hard to provide the best education possible for every student in our district, and our community is working to get extra funding from the State House. But while ultimately the state foundation budget is broken, Chelsea itself can and must step up to better support our students. One of my colleagues will provide more detail about the disparity between Chelsea's education funding and the state average, but as Chelsea faces gentrification and the displacement of our community members, we must use the increased revenue to better serve the families that come here seeking a safe and supportive education and a future for their children. If Chelsea can provide just 3% more funding, staying in line with the increased revenue the city has received, we can save our middle school ELL department, restore the co-teaching positions that were slashed at the middle school level two years ago, and reduce class sizes across the board. We're asking you to help us give our students the schools they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Manrel Teshia. I live in 893 Broadway in Chelsea. I stand here with a request to the City Council to help us fund for our education. There have been devastating cuts for the year of 2020, and the Superintendent Burke is doing her best to keep the students' best interest into account. However, it is hard to do the same job we did last year with millions of dollars less. I just had an experience with a Nova driver this afternoon as I headed home. His name was Jonathan, and he told me that he used to live in Chelsea, and I asked him if he went to Chelsea High School, and he told me no because his parents thought it was too dangerous, so they sent him to a different school. Is this the profile of the school that our city wants to reflect? We are made up of immigrants. We have people with different backgrounds. We have creative minds, and we can prosper, but we cannot develop and educate those minds unless we have proper teachers. We need teachers who are devoted to their jobs, but how can they be devoted when they do not know if they will be dismissed or not the following year? You have to know that the decisions you make this year will impact the coming years of not just Chelsea High School, but the entire city as well. Let's not lose the focus of the city of Chelsea. We cannot have outsiders come and rebuild our city. Let's grab our children, give them proper education, give them proper teachers, and I assure you, they will be... They will give back greatness to the city of Chelsea. Help us prepare the future of our city by fixing the present. You may ask, how can we make an impact? I want to remind you that it is you we have come for help. It is you who have the power to change the future of our city. Thank you.
My name is Jocelyn Post at 91 Memorial Park Ave. So if the school funding were to be at pace with the city's revenue, it would help all of Chelsea schools with their necessities, keeping our biggest supporters, the teachers, keeping our schools clean, and allowing greater opportunities for all children. keeping our schools clean, and allowing greater opportunities for all children, from the Caminos program in the elementary school to having life skills in Chelsea High, which we don't. At the high school, we are close to losing the French department, and now we will be losing other teachers that have been there for us since we entered the school. I know it won't affect me personally next year, since I will be graduating, but I can't stand the thought of the future classes having to find a new trusting support system year after year. We can't just watch the students and teachers struggle every year when there is a chance that their struggles can end tonight with your hope.
Thank you.
Hello, I live in 61 Shortleft Street. I am here on behalf of all Chelsea High School students and teachers, asking that you please increase the percent city revenues spent on our schools by 2.7% in order to restore school spending to the percentage of the city budget back in 2014. This is approximately $4 million and will prevent damaging cuts that the school are facing. I also ask that you all advocate for the renewal of the state school funding formula that has stayed the same since 1993. Clearly, it is no longer effective and needs some adjustments. It is now 2019, and we are in dire need of a new promising formula. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Lindberg. My address is 47 Rosedale Road, Watertown, Massachusetts. I am an English language learner teacher at Clark Avenue Middle School. I teach students who are new to our country and who are learning English. This is my fourth year in Chelsea and my first year at the Clark. I spent my first three years at the Brown Middle School. Year after year, I am lucky to welcome countless families into our district and into my classroom. They are hoping to fulfill their dreams. For these families and all families who enroll in Chelsea Public Schools, our district can provide a bridge to success. Year after year, I am fortunate to be surrounded by incredible colleagues, both new and tenured educators. I am surrounded by adults that spend countless hours preparing the most engaging and challenging lessons. I have faith that regardless of the resources that we are provided, Chelsea educators will always strive to provide our children with a 21st century education. We will never stop. Now I ask you tonight to please provide us with a budget that can adequately support the needs of our students. Because of four years of budget deficits, our English language learner department in the middle school is now facing a third program change since 2015. This leaves our teachers constantly having to adapt to new positions, including teaching new grade levels, teaching new different proficiency levels, and teaching different content areas. Therefore, we must constantly create new academic units rather than building on past success. While my colleagues always rise to the occasion, these constant changes are difficult for us to adjust to. We need consistency, and our children need consistency. We need a budget that can support our English language learners, our first generation college students, our children, and our teachers. We need our children to be our priority in this city. They are our future. To quote President Obama, "If we want America to lead in the 21st century, nothing is more important than giving everyone the best education possible, from the day they start preschool to the day they start their career." Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Muller. This is my fifth year working as an instructional coach at Chelsea High School. I'm a resident of Cambridge, 260 Sidney Street. I've come to just provide some numbers pulled from the Department of Education as well as Chelsea's public budget. I truly believe that our students deserve the best possible education. Communities are stronger when their schools are stronger, and strong schools require adequate funding. In recent years, Chelsea has been, probably thanks to some of your great work, increasing in the revenue that we've been taking in. Thank you. Our school funding has increased as well, but it hasn't quite kept pace. Compared to four years ago, the city is spending 2.7% less of its overall revenue on our school, as some of the students earlier named. And this might sound like a really small percentage, but it equals about $4 million if you were to apply that to the city revenue from 2018 of over $163 million. Our current school budget shortfall, after really aggressive cuts for the past several years that you've already heard about, is only $2 million. We are asking the city council to increase the amount of money it allocates for schools to cover this shortfall and to help the city's spending on education keep pace with our increasing revenue. Using data from the Department of Education, in terms of per pupil funding, Chelsea is at the 38th percentile of per pupil funding compared to the rest of school districts in the state. In terms of the percent of required school funding, we are in the bottom 15% compared to other school districts in the state. So I beg you, please give our students what they deserve and help our school spending to keep pace with our city revenue. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Fatima Mendoza at 45 Jefferson. I want to thank you guys for giving me this time to talk. A concern I have about local public school fundings, so I come to you guys as a student that has been experiencing challenges with housing in the past two years. My parents isn't always around or is focused on other problems we face as a family, such as housing, employment, and immigration. My story is part of many students in my community. Don't get me wrong, I'm not here for a free pass. I'm working hard for a bright future. I'm enrolled into college classes. I'm striving for a college degree, but what I'm here for tonight is to ask you to please support our public schools and increase the fundings you give us. I promise that I will continue to fight for my future as long as you have our backs. Thank you.
My name is Dahlia. I live on 98 Blossom Street, and I'm a Chelsea Collaborative Youth Leader. I'm here similar to the other youth to ask that you please continue to support our schools, but I'm also here to invite you to the State House to advocate. For SD Bill 101, also known as the Education Promise Act, we need you guys to use the power you have as city councillors and to make calls to your state representatives, but most importantly, join us in solidarity. I will reach out to you all individually with the date and time when our education coalition decides the advocacy day, so you guys can join us. I understand that we have different demographics in other communities, but our funding still does not fit the needs of our students. So I, along with my peers, encourage the city to give more funding to the schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Christopher Sante. I own a 38 Hawthorne. Hard to follow that up, but obviously, please support the schools. Good evening, city council. It's been a while since I was up here, and I appreciate all you taking the time to listen to me and some of my concerns. Much of my concerns have to do with what we can accomplish as a city on issues that we can come together on. Many times, we argue on contentious and divisive issues in the city, like DC, whether it be more market rate apartments versus affordable housing, more market rate homeownership versus affordable homeownership, where CPA funds should be allocated, board nominations, et cetera. What I'm trying to focus on, on where all of us as Chelsea residents can agree on, what I want to do is challenge the council, and in doing so, the city manager, to begin to tackle the hard-hitting issues that almost all of Chelsea is together. That is, one, the raising of the Chelsea and Meridian Street Bridge. Unanimously, almost every citizen here is being negatively impacted by both these bridges continually going up without any care for the effects of the residents. The excuse of the tides, or that we have no control of the DPA, or Mass DOT will start taking care of it with the Coast Guard, don't fly anymore. We need you to get Tom out there and have him sit in front of both Mass DOT's office as well as fly, if need be, to DC to get something done. Either way, let's do something this year. Number two, mass port and soundproofing our homes. In January and February, the most flights out of Logan used runway 33L for the first time ever, and it was a brutal two months. We used to qualify for noise abatement, but they took it away several years ago after the extension of runway 33L. Right now, we have the busiest runway, you'll hear him coming, at Logan, flying 200 to 400 feet over our homes with zero soundproofing. I want to give you an idea. When we qualified for noise abatement, we had 28,000 flights over Chelsea. 2018, we had 70,000. We're on track this year for between 90,000 to 100,000 flights, more than any other place. We can't sleep at night. Our homes vibrate, especially in District 6, District 4, the ones that are directly in that path. Our homes and yards are filled with soot. We're woken up daily, and our hearing is getting impacted. But yet, the city does nothing. I hear only one councillor continue this fight against this injustice. We don't want excuses such as we can't find a third party to do a noise study, or we're scared to lose millions we receive in excise taxes and other revenue from mass port-related businesses in Chelsea. This is our health that is getting destroyed and that of our children, so I expect to start seeing Tom sitting out in mass port offices as soon as possible and lobbying through press and DC politicians to do what's right for us. I'm fine going. I'll do it. I had an issue in District 6 with Eastern Mineral, the salt's completely destroying all the wood on our houses. We have no development happening on the upside of marginal. It's all abandoned things. I went to Eastern Mineral two weeks ago and met with the owner for two hours. If you guys don't want to do it, I'm saying if you don't want to have Tom do it, I have no problem. I'll go sit outside in mass port office. I do work 60 hours a week, but I'll find a way. Lastly, City Hall and its departments. This one won't be popular, obviously, but many Chelsea people echo the management of some of the city's departments here. I know management has grown leaps and bounds since the 90s, and I think we have some good stuff this year with DPW, with Fidel coming on and some other ones, but there's big issues such as double parking, the management of double parking in the city. There's one reason that failed. That was double parking, the reimagining of Broadway. We all agree here that double parking are an issue. Sorry, lost my train of thought. I'll finish it up. I understand everyone here wants to tackle their own issues, et cetera, but please remember, everyone here serves all of Chelsea and all of your districts, with people of different races, religions, economic incomes, whether you consider someone a gentrifier, or you consider them an original resident that was here 150 years ago, or someone that's been, you know, immigrant from Central America, or an immigrant from Poland. We are looking for you to solve the issues that plague all of us. Please, city council, focus this year and challenge Tom to show why you extended his contract and on these items that we all agree upon. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Norielista Jesus. I live at 31 Lewis Street. I'm an organizer at the Chelsea Collaborative, but I'm also a parent of two little ones in Chelsea Public Schools. I want to say first, thank you to all of you for always, year after year, supporting our Chelsea youth, whether it's employment or education. I know that you guys sit down and you talk about how can we continue to support our youth, and it's shame on the state for having us having to come to you guys every year and ask for more money. However, I understand that there's gonna be more debates this year when you consider giving us more money. I would like to understand and for you guys to speak to us in regards to what is more important than our youth. I understand that this is a burden, right? I understand that there are other communities that it's unfair, they don't have to make decisions the way that we do, but that's why we continue to advocate on the state levels, teachers, students, parents. We just can't give up on our youth. We need to find ways to support them, whether it's negotiating something or give and take something, but please include us in this process. Please be transparent with us, and please don't forget that our youth are our future. Before I leave, I want to talk to you as a parent. I want to share with you guys some of the concerns I have for my six-year-old and my seven-year-old. My son is a student who cannot concentrate in large classrooms. When I hear that there are teachers being cut from the schools, I think about how much bigger is my son's classroom gonna get. I am thankful that he has a program that pulls him out of the classroom to support him with some of these skills, but still, there are other classes that he's taking where there may be up to 30 students in that classroom. I'm also concerned about how I was privileged enough when I was little to be part of the Caminos program at the Kelly School. It has helped me tremendously, and I take pride in knowing both English and Spanish. My children may not be able to do the same, because we are constantly debating on whether we need to let go the French teacher, or we need to end the Caminos program, or is it even possible to provide Spanish classes for some of our students? Please, please, please reach out to us, count on us for more information, listen to our families, accommodate their hours. These parents are working multiple jobs. They have concerns that were listed earlier, employment, gentrification. It's not that they don't care during Monday through Friday, it's that they're making sure they can keep a roof over their children's heads, right? Keeping food on the table. Accommodate at least one Saturday meeting, talk to some of these nonprofits in the community, count on us, and also, join us at the state level as we advocate this 22nd for the public hearing on the Education Promise Act, Bill SD 101. But also, we will be inviting you, and as Dahlia mentioned, she will be emailing each and every one of you individually to give you details of what we do in April to show the state. Shame on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Winship, 62 Beacon Street. I have happy news related to the decision that the city council made to have merchants stop providing plastic bags in about six months from now. I came with a little pep talk and a little encouragement for residents of the city who may not have thought this through before now, but I've been a user of reusable bags for years, so I brought some samples tonight just in case I can reach one person to say, oh, I could do that too. So first of all, we have the basic backpack, which is great for if you're going to the grocery store. Then we have the small bag like this, which I consider the grocery store bag also. Then we have the bag from, I've had this bag for like 11 years. It was from one of the River Rebels, and this is my liquor store bag. It's... So I want everybody to be encouraged if, when you leave your house, get in the habit of bringing your phone, your keys, your wallet, and your bag.
Oh, my God, that's great. That's awesome. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Also, John Gunning, 62 Beacon Street. I want to follow up Mary Ann's comments about taking care of matters in your own hands, like her lined bags that carry a lot. I know she loads me down many times. What I'd like to talk about is the trash collection. I was here meeting earlier, and they said that the trash, when they collect them, sometimes the trash gets spilt out, and what should we do about it, and all these big solutions, different companies. Well, my simple solution is get the citizens of Chelsea to get involved. My street, 62 Beacon Street, Monday's our trash day. Monday night, Tuesday morning, I'm out there, and I touch up whatever does get spilt out. It's simple enough to do. Also, the cars across the street park there so they can go to the courthouse, and a lot of the people are not from Chelsea or are from different parts of Chelsea, and they over and they'll dump out their soda cans, wrappers, and stuff. So every so often, if the street looks dirty, I go out there and touch it up. So what we need to do is just get the citizens more involved. If there are trash, and there is a lot of trash, we, the people, need to go out and touch it up ourselves. If you're the one person doing it, feel free to go up and down the street, talk to your neighbors, and see if somebody else can touch it up. You know, week one, I'll do it. Week two, you'll do it. One month, the next month, either way. But Citizen of Chelsea, that could be the first solution. Try and get them involved, especially in the areas that are more trashier. Follow up, same thing with the snow. The snow removal, in front of our area is a bus stop, and this whole winters, as past winters, I shoveled. I shoveled enough for a bus and a half length to pull in. That's the whole sidewalk, the gutters and everything. If you look at our street before and after the bus stop, the snow mounds are there. It's been a week or so after a snowstorm, the mounds are still there. Not for me, because I go out and we touch it up. I touch it up, knock it down, spread it out, have it melt faster. And I've noticed a lot of the people in Chelsea complain about the snow piles blocking cars, blocking their streets, but these are the same people that don't pick up a shovel to do anything about it. Or if they do pick up a shovel, it's to make that one path one shovel length long that they can squeak by, and they never bother to widen it. I started out with that one path myself. Then I go back out and I widen it. Then I hit the curb, and I spread it out. And now, because of it, that bus stop, which is about 20 feet down from us, stops right in front of our place because that's where it's cleared. It makes it convenient for us to step out and the people from Chelsea to get on and off. So again, just as a common sense thing, before we look at charts and getting organizations in to look at charts and to figure out, you know, who's the best, maybe the best is the people of Chelsea. They get involved in these meetings, and that's great, but getting involved in actually hands-on doing stuff in and around Chelsea, the trash, Mary Ann's lined bags, she gave me several, I keep in the car. If I go to the store just for a cupcake and soda, I use one of these lined bags, so I'm not using the plastic the stores keep.
One more minute, John. One more minute.
I know. So just keep in mind that Citizen of Chelsea have more power, and we can do more, and they need to get involved, but the councils need to go up and down, or representatives to talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? That portion of the meeting is closed.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes. Council Roberts moves to accept and file communication under suspension.
Communication from the City Manager. Appointments to Boards and Commissions pursuant to Section 42 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I'm writing a recommended following individuals to Boards and Commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Community Schools Advisory Board, Mr. Kevin Sandoval, for a new three-year term expiring in 2022. For reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Takerya Christmas, for a new three-year term expiring in 2022. For appointment to the Planning Board, Ms. Sylvia Ramirez, 63 Reynolds Ave, Chelsea affiliate, expired term of Ms. Gladys Vega, term expires on December 15, 2020.
Can I have a motion?
Is this a second?
No.
No.
All right, now move to a second reading under suspension.
Second reading.
Second, communication, City Issued Trash Barrels. I'm writing in response to the recent City Council order requesting that commencing on January 1, 2020, the city required exclusive use of City Issued Trash Barrels as trash receptacles, and enforce any noncompliance through ticketing. Based upon this council audit, the city is prepared to enforce through ticketing the exclusive use of City Issued Trash Barrels as of January 1, 2020. However, in order to ensure that residents have adequate notice of this change and the anticipated enforcement, we will be engaging in a marketing campaign to publicize this change. We expect to commence this publicity effort in the summer. Please note that our solid waste regulations approved by the Board of Health do still allow, in addition to the City Issued Trash Barrels, the use of overflow plastic bags approved by the DPW. However, we are changing the specs on these arms plastic bags to make them thicker and more durable.
Council Lopez moves to accept and file a communication under suspension, then no objections.
Limiting tax increase for seniors 70-plus and tax worker program income eligibility.
Council of Cooper. Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Something coming up on the new business, I guess.
On that one, I don't know.
Next communication, transportation-related issues. Darkless Bike Program. As you may know, since the late summer of 2017, the City of Chelsea has been experimenting with the Darkless Bikes initially as a pilot with the company Off Row, and then last year as part of the regional metropolitan area planning council contract with Lime Bike. Notwithstanding some minor complaints, I believe...
Council of Janeda.
Move to accept and file, there'll be something new under, coming up later.
Thank you, I'll wait for the rest of the meeting, thank you, Councilor. Louis.
Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from City Solicitor Sherwood Watson-Fisher regarding legal opinion on parking restrictions in TIF agreement.
Thank you. Um, I move to accept and file the communication under suspension, if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it briefly, please.
All right.
Okay. So, as many people are here for the Innis Development Project, as people know, one of the biggest concerns that residents have is parking in that area, so what I asked the City Solicitor to do was to give her legal opinion as to whether or not we would be able, as part of a TIF agreement, which is something that, um, a tax break that the Housing Authority will be seeking, um, from the City Council, is if part of one of the conditions would be to ask them to enter into an agreement with residents, um, saying that they won't participate in, in the residential parking program, as to not further impact those streets. That, um, the City Solicitor's advice is that we can in fact do that, it could be a condition under the TIF, and so I just wanted to let the public know that, um, and I wanted to make sure that I said that out loud. Thank you.
And Council Bishop.
I support Council of Hudo on this issue. Parking is a very important issue to me, and the fact that we are going to be allowed to have an agreement with the developer is the only reason, or one of the reasons, that I am going to support the 40R. Had this not been allowed, I don't know if I could have supported it. So, I think this is very important, and especially to the people that are living on Watch Street and other areas surrounding this development that will be affected by it. And there's nothing worse, it's great to have off-street parking, I consider myself a lucky guy, because I have off-street parking, but there are many people on those streets that do not have off-street parking, and are forced to walk two or three blocks from their house in order to find a parking spot. That's really a bad situation. In many cases, they can't find a parking spot. What do you do then? You park illegally and get a ticket. And that's what they've been, a lot of people have been doing. So I think this is a very important issue, as far as this council is concerned, and I'm glad to see that Council Hudo pushed it, and it's going to be part of the TIF agreement. Thank you.
Any other councils that would speak? Next order of business.
We have a copy of a communication received from Planner and Land Use Administrator Ladell regarding the proposed zoning amendment to create a 40R Central Ave Smart Growth Overlay District, and to add a new section 34-184 revised to 34-186 to the City of Chelsea Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 34.
Suspension of some coming up on the unfinished business. Marrow, accept and file.
We have a late communication received from John DePriest, Director Planning and Development, with regards to the Central Ave Smart Growth Overlay District, Chapter 40R zoning amendments.
To hold that until we bring out the 40R from unfinished business?
You don't want to act on that?
Uh, we can have it read for the record.
You can accept and file.
Accept and file.
Okay, we're going on to unfinished business.
At this time, from unfinished business, I'd like to remove from conference the 40R and all matters relating to the 40R. Do it, and actually, this calls for two votes, one will be on the 40R, and one will be on the actual map. Yes, sir.
All right. You have the items properly before you, in the discussion. We have the introduced amendment, 40R written as amended on the recommendation from the zoning board from the City Solicitor, and that's what you're moving roll call on?
Yes. Okay, would any council like to speak, or are we all? Council Hudo?
Sure, I'll go first. So, um, it's been a long ride. This, um, I'll tell you, this, I remember this came before us, I remember if it was two years ago or not, and, and I know that this council had to vote it down because prevailing wage wasn't on the table, and I really just have to give kudos and take my hat off to the Housing Authority for going back to the drawing table and making it work. I have family that lives in the Central Ave projects, and I seen firsthand the deplorable conditions in which they have to live, and never would I ever put parking before the, those living conditions, because I have family that lives there, I've seen the mold, I've seen the mice, I've seen, I, I get it. No matter what income level you, you have, everyone deserves to live in dignity, and I will do anything in my power to make sure that I will be supporting this project, but also, I am an at-large City Councilor, and I represent an entire community, I also live in this area, and I recognize that parking is a huge issue, and I'd be remiss to not acknowledge that. The topic of parking isn't, oh, it's either parking or, or providing units, it's parking is an issue, how can we come to the table, and how can we talk about this as a community? And I thank the Housing Authority and Corporate Management, Ronnie, you've been amazing, and Paul Nowicki, and coming to the table and really sitting down and making sure that we can make this work for everybody. I don't want to stand in the way of this, I will be voting in favor of the 40R. I will, I do intend on making the condition of the parking part of a, a condition of the TIF moving forward, but I don't want to do anything now that's going to stop the process and us doing what we need to do to make sure that those 96 families get the homes that they deserve. I know there's a lot of division in this city, but I know that when we work together that we can make this happen, and I know because I've seen it firsthand in the way that we've been able to work together. So, thank you, everybody, thank you to the city for making this work, and let's, hopefully we can make this work for our 96 families. Thanks.
Any other councils that would like to speak? Council Brown?
Thank you, I'll be voting yes on the project, um, after spending many hours and lunches and meeting the, not only the developers, but also the Director of Housing, speaking to the members of staff, um, also taking time out to go down and look at the current condition that that unit, those projects were in. 96 residents staying there, 96 residents getting upgraded apartments, um, for 99 years, an additional 40. It's sometime, and I explained it to not only the Housing Director, but I also explained it to some of the members, when you actually sit down and talk to folks, whether it's over the phone or one-on-one, about the importance of this project and how this project will really benefit our community. Just imagine, um, the contractor, though he has an investment, he still has a vision that 96 folks that's currently living in deplorable situations will move into a building, they're folks that potentially could pay $3,000 a month to live there. He's not going to put them in the corner, he's going to integrate these folks together, so we're going to have all these folks living together with folks from different economic backgrounds, different financial backgrounds, different languages. This is a win, this is, as one of the speakers spoke about tonight, this is a model situation for the City of Chelsea. When folks see that Chelsea can do it, then other folks are going to want to do it. I mean, I know the City Manager, and I wasn't here two years ago when it first started, but I know the City Managers and former council members that have been here, they've been dealing with it, and I know by speaking to the Director of the Housing that it's been an issue, that they've been back and forth. Um, Ronnie, you've been excellent, calling, making every question that I had clearly answered. Thank you for your dedication, thank you for your commitment to this project. I was early, one of the guys, one of the council members that thought that parking was a big issue, and it is an issue, but I, talking to other folks, it did outweigh the benefits that we were receiving here in this, um, project unit. So I'm excited about it, I'm glad, I spoke to the District Council, I said to the District Council, hey man, this is your district, you know, I know you know a lot of folks that I don't know, what are the people saying? What do you think? I got a A-plus rating from him, so I said, hey, you know, that put me on board a little closer to it. So I just think that, you know, again, being here, the concerns about parking are not going to be all met. Um, are they going to be that much worse? No, because again, we got the silver lining, we got the 117, we got the 116, and I do agree with the guy that spoke about it, at any moment, that bridge go up, Friday morning, I was going to work, I was on the silver line, get down to, um, Central Ave and Eastern Ave, the bridge went up, and it went up slow, and it went up slower, then it came down slower. So I said, oh my God, I thought I was going to be early this morning, and I left early. But those are the, those are the things that we deal with here, those are the things that we deal with here when we moved here, we realized that every piece of, every piece of, um, puzzle that we put together make our city better. So I think this here is another great piece of puzzle that's going to not only make it better for the 96 residents, but also the 40 units, it's still going to be affordable, mid, mid-level, mid-market, but I'm just thinking about also the other folks who's saying, you know what, I'm willing to live in this condition, I'm willing to live in this, um, environment where I could be paying $3,000, $2,500, and someone across the hall could be paying $700. What that says to me, that whoever the management company is here, they're going to have to be responsible, because someone is paying $3,000, and someone is paying $500 or $700, if they drop trash, I know they're going to have a responsibility to say, you know what, this is not like where I used to live at, we're going to have some responsibility here. So I, I think it's a very good project, I'm grateful for all the phone calls that I got, I'm grateful for my colleagues in my district that called me, my friends that realized how important it was for me to realize that, hey Calvin, I know parking's a big thing, everyone's talking about parking, but there's a, there's a benefit here, and I want to thank the City Manager, um, I would have voted for it, um, in the end, but all these folks that called me and took time out to, you know, sit down with me, um, on a cold, snowy day, I asked the, I asked the Director, I said, how long you been here, man? We went into some places, they were horrible. I said, he can't have, he could not have been here to look at this, but even walking in the hallway, but it's, I know they have maintenance, I know they clean the place, but still, we get all new units here, so I want to thank you guys, I want to thank you ladies for the work, the dedication, and I think, and the union. I told my colleague here about, you know, we got to make sure that the union has something. I didn't know anything, it never really came up at the table, but Richie, thank you for being here, and I know that, you know, that's another, um, program that we have to support, because those are local residents also. So thank you guys for being here for the union, and thank you guys for the commitment with that, thank you.
Council Pelletanda?
Yeah, I'm not going to say too much, I don't want to be too long with it, like my fellow council, but anyways, uh, I can't believe this has taken so long to even come into effect, even be talked about. I mean, this is a long process, ongoing process, should have been fixed a long time ago. Like we said, 96 people living in deplorable units, believe me, I wouldn't want to live in one of those units. Like I said, it should have been fixed a long time ago. A lot of cities and towns have done over their housing units, I mean, they're putting people back, and I'm glad we're doing the same thing here, I will be voting for this. Uh, I'm concerned about, you know, my fellow council about the TIF taking away parking from people that won't be able to park on Chelsea streets. I know Central Avenue has a lot of meters there, maybe something can be done with the meters, where the residents can still park on those streets, take the meters out, because the residents are more important than people working over at the airport, don't live in Chelsea, park their cars on our streets, and they get to benefit from us, and we as residents can't take that benefit. So, I do appreciate all that everybody's done, uh, you know, that's worked on this project over the past years, and, you know, like I says, let's get it done, let's move forward, let's put those 96 people back in those units that they deserve, and along with that, we are making a lot more units on top of that for, you know, mid-range and market rate people, it's going to dress up that whole Central Avenue, it's going to make those other people that live on Central Avenue and across from Central Avenue, bring their property values up, it's going to be a win-win situation for everybody, so let's keep this going, and I will be voting for this.
Council Robinson?
Um, I will be brief, as this has been a long three years, this project started when I was the President of Council. We heard from the tenants, I heard from my former colleague, Juan Vega, he couldn't have said it any better, this is a model, not only for Chelsea, but for Massachusetts that can be duplicated throughout the country. So I think we should be proud to be able to vote in favor of this project here this evening. I want to thank my colleagues for stepping up.
Council Lopez?
Good evening, I want to say thank you to Chelsea Housing for reaching out to me and to all councilors, and also to, for reaching out to the neighbors on Watch Street and around areas, uh, thank you for all what you have done. Councilor Brown, union was the issue, the first time it was, why it was voted out, because there was no union, they were not going to hire union at that time, and now, uh, it's going to be union working people there, and Chelsea people also, and I'll be voting in favor, thank you for all what you have done.
Council Bishop?
Within a week of being elected to this term, I got a phone call from Paul Nowicki, and I thought he called to say congratulations, but he didn't, he said, can you meet with Al Ewing?
Council Bishop, could you speak into the mic, please?
Pardon me?
Could you speak into the mic?
Thank you. Paul asked me to meet with Al Ewing as soon as possible, and I said, for what? And he said, oh, the Innis Project, he'd like to speak to you about it. And I said, gee, that's down the other end of the city, has really nothing to do with me, but yes, I will be happy to meet with Al. So we met, and I, uh, told him my concerns, and he's done everything he could to take care of my concerns. I took the time to go down to the project and see the conditions that are there, and that is why I am voting for it. This is not only a hope for the people that live there, it's the only hope. If this doesn't go through, there's nothing else, and those conditions... If this doesn't go through, there's nothing else, and those conditions, nobody should be forced to live in them. So, definitely support it and wish you all the best. Thank you.
Councilor Cooper?
I don't have very much to say. The only thing I have to say is thank you, Mr. Cockburn, Mr. Al Ewing, and thank you to all the people for living in that area, now you're going to get a better place to live. I've lived in that area for forty years, so this will be a great enhancement to that area, and it'll be a good place for the people to live and raise their children, so thank you very much.
Councilor Vigeneta?
Thank you. I'm going to be brief, because I'm in seclusion back here for a reason, I'm sick, but this was important enough for me back here, and I didn't want to get my colleagues the same cold I have, so, but I felt it was necessary for me to be here because of the issue and how long this city has been working, so many different partners, and I think it's a great project. I know there was a long history here, I've spoken before, I was one of the councilors that had voted against it, pre, in an earlier rendition of it, because it didn't have prevailing wages and that recognition that cannot be under-valued, because actually, this city council won an award in recognition because of that stand, and the balance between having affordable housing and being able to earn a wage to be able to have, you know, live and remain in this community are tied together, and I'm glad to see this project to this point and get to the final, you know, and I can't wait to be there when it's finally open and we can tour those apartments, and those ninety-six families can be proud to open their doors, you know, and not be embarrassed about where they're living. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we're looking at a roll call vote of the program as amended.
Yes, I will be adopted. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, nine opposed, motion adopted. We have the other roll call as requested.
All right, we're not, we're not done yet. We have one more vote to complete this.
We have the other roll call requested by Councilor Robinson on the map that was just introduced and attach it to the forty.
Yes, and this will complete the process.
Right, roll call.
Go ahead.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
Yes.
Councilor Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, nine opposed, motion adopted.
All right, motion passed. Next order of business?
Next order of business would be second readings.
All right.
Want to give them a couple minutes recess to clear the hall?
At this point, we'll take a two-minute recess to clear out.
The chambers, Jim.
At this point, I'd like the councilors to come back in, so we can resume our meeting.
So, at this point, over to the second. You're good?
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take the first one, because you have the first one. Oh, you want to do that roll call on A first?
Yeah, just the roll call, and then I'll give you the number.
Ready? Are we back? Oh, everybody's gone. Where everybody go? Maria?
Your mayor. Your mayor. See.
Wow. Are we back?
Giovanni.
We have a call. It's too late, they already heard you. The public already heard. Okay, ready? Second readings.
Second readings. Our first order under second readings, introduced by Councilor Brown, ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account to the assessors' office legal services account.
Councilor Brown? On? A. A roll call vote on just A? Okay.
Roll call now.
Roll call on A, please. Can you read the order of Mr.?
I'm sorry, can you, can you?
Ordered that the Chelsea City?
Call on A solo.
Okay, got it.
Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account to the assessors' office legal services account. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor?
The first one.
Council Avizaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda?
Yes.
Council Tijada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
Eleven in favor, nine opposed, motion adopted.
Okay.
We have the other roll call requested by Council Robinson on the map that was just introduced and attach it to the forty.
Yes, and this will complete the process.
Right, roll call.
Go ahead.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Council Avizaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda?
Yes.
Council Tijada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Next order of business?
Next order of business would be second readings.
All right.
Want to give them a couple minutes recess to clear the hall?
At this point, we'll take a two-minute recess to clear out.
The chambers, Jim.
At this point, I'd like the councilors to come back in, so we can resume our meeting.
So, at this point, over to the second. You're good?
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take the first one, because you have the first one.
Oh, you want to do that roll call on A first? Yeah, just the roll call, and then I'll give you the number.
Ready? Are we back? Oh, everybody's gone. Where everybody go? Maria?
Your mayor. Your mayor. See.
Are we back?
Giovanni.
We have a call. It's too late, they already heard you. The public already heard. Okay, ready? Second readings.
Second readings. Our first order under second readings, introduced by Councilor Brown, ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the overlay surplus account to the assessors' office legal services account. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Council?
The first one.
Council Avizaneda? Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda?
Yes.
Council Tijada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
And Council Ray Cooperow?
Council Ray, Council Vigeneta wants to be recorded as a yes.
Yes, okay, eleven in favor, nine opposed, motion adopted. We have the second request order introduced by Council Brown.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that request roll call on four of the orders, B is in Boyce, C is in Charlie, D is in David, E is in Eddie. Have a roll call on those four.
Mr. Chairman agrees. Roll call on B through E. Did you want to speak?
Mr. Clerk? No.
Are you serious? Did you want to speak on the orders?
I wanted to ask Mr. Clerk if he could just read the line item of it.
Sure.
So, the councilors would know what he's voting on.
Sure.
Okay, let me see. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of ten thousand five hundred from free cash to the 2019 Emergency Management Department Alarm Box. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars from free cash to the FY 2019 Emergency Management Department Vehicle Maintenance. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of thirty thousand from free cash to the FY 2019 Emergency Management Radio Purchase and Repair Expense Account. And ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation in the amounts of thirty one thousand five hundred from free cash to the 2019 Emergency Management Department of the Supplies Supplies Expense Account.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only this afternoon, we had, prior to the council meeting tonight, we had a meeting, we had the director of E-91 Emergency Management Department come in and explain the request and the purpose of this request. He came in and talked about the request, the first one is a request that's covering ongoing legal fees and assessors' offers. This is something that the council had already previously authorized, twenty percent of this source was already authorized in a previous budget, and so I just was asking my colleagues if they had any questions tonight, we're a chance to answer those questions, and I think everyone got a pretty much understanding of these four issues, and I just wanted to break them up in this four. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. So, Council Bishop?
Madam Chairman, on these four?
Can you please speak into the microphone, Councilor?
I don't know who keeps moving the microphone. These four items on the emergency management, I'm a little concerned about. We do a budget every year for each of the departments. We have three parts of that budget, salary, operations, and capital. The operations part is where all of this money is going, it's seventy-nine thousand dollars from free cash going into the emergency, different accounts in the operations budget of emergency management. Their entire budget for this year was only ninety-six thousand dollars, and they're looking to increase it by seventy-nine thousand. I asked for explanations, and I guess we got some reasons, they weren't too good, in my opinion. Of the ninety-six thousand that we appropriated, with only three months left to this budget, three and a half months, unspent of the ninety-six thousand, we have about seventy thousand dollars. This kind of an increase wouldn't fly during a regular budget season. To me, it's something that we're so close to the next budget season, what are we doing? So, we not only gave them the budget, we gave them capital improvement money, I guess about two hundred thousand dollars of capital improvement money that's going to be spent in emergency management. So, I asked these be kept separate so that I could vote against them, because in my opinion, it's only my opinion, I don't think it's wise to spend our free cash on things like this.
So, you're asking? Okay, got it. I got it, where you say for the all four, got it. Councilor Cooperow?
I have a concern on 11G, seven thousand bucks for?
We're not looking at it yet.
It's, we're doing 11B, C, D, and E, all matters pertaining to emergency management only.
This is management.
We're not on that yet, no.
No, 11G is fifteen thousand dollars for the school supplement.
Okay, Counselor, 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 we're only doing B, C, D, and E.
Okay.
Okay? Did you want to speak on either one of those?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Concerning about the seven thousand, which is one of these transfers? Last week's lettering on it was G, that's why he's saying.
Oh, last week's G?
Oh, okay, so we're looking at the agenda, so you have a concern about the seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, looking at the agenda.
Got it, okay, so, go ahead. Go ahead.
It seems like seven thousand dollars is a lot of money to maintain one car, actually, because here there's supposed to be two cars, then they ended up being three cars, then one car was a brand-new car, so it's only really maintaining an old car and another car. That's a lot of money to maintain a car, seven thousand bucks, and I can't figure it out, why would I vote to maintain a car for seven thousand bucks? What are they doing? They're repainting it, refixing it, changing it. Oh, I know what they're doing, they're getting ready for NASCAR. They're putting a jet motor inside of it.
Okay, Counselor, come on. Any other councilors wish to speak on any of the matters pertaining to emergency management?
Roll call.
Okay, so we move to roll call?
Councilor Garcia?
With one, I'm sorry, one, we're doing one vote for all four of these items.
One vote on these four items. All items pertaining to 911.
So, on the agenda, it's?
So, if you don't like one of them, you're going to vote them all down then?
Correct, unless you'd like to?
If they don't get enough votes, they'll all vote it down, yeah, the whole thing. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda?
Yes.
Council Tijada?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Bishop?
Yes.
Council Ray Cooperow?
Yes.
Nine in favor, nine opposed, motion adopted. Okay, one, two. Want to take the other three at one roll call?
Yes.
I'll read them off. Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to account chapter ninety of the transfer from the general fund. Ordered that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section sixty-four, budget management procedures whereby cost incurred FY 2018 were not paid in our ode to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY 19 budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure of four hundred and fifteen dollars from the Human Resource Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid medical bill balance to professional health services from the prior year. And the final one, ordered that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, budget management procedures whereby cost incurred in FY 18 were not paid in our ode to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY 19 budget. That the city council authorize the expenditure of four hundred and fifteen dollars from the Human Resource Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid meter part balance to McCade meters in from the prior year.
Councilor Brown, roll call vote for all three.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I asked that we have a roll call vote on these items.
Okay.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vido?
Yes.
Council Avizaneda?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
Council Perlatanda? Their entire budget for this year was only $96,000, and they're looking to increase it by 79,000. I asked for explanations, and I guess we got some reasons, they weren't too good, in my opinion. Of the 96,000 that we appropriated, with only three months left to this budget, three and a half months, unspent of the 96,000, we have about $70,000. This kind of an increase wouldn't fly during a regular budget season. To me, it's something that we're so close to the next budget season, what are we doing? So we not only gave them the budget, we gave them capital improvement money, I guess about $200,000 of capital improvement money that's going to be spent in emergency management. So I asked these be kept separate so that I could vote against them, because in my opinion, it's only my opinion, I don't think it's wise to spend our free cash on things like this.
So you're asked, okay, got it. I got it, what you said, for all four, got it. Counselor Recupero.
Concern on 11G, 7,000 bucks for-
We're not looking at yet.
It's, we're doing 11B, C, D, and E, all matters pertaining to emergency management only.
This is my money. You may not-
We're not on that yet, no.
11G is $15,000 for the school supplemental-
Okay, Counselor, 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 we're only doing B, C, D, and E.
Okay.
Okay? Did you want to speak on either one of those?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Which is one of these transfers? Last week's lettering on it was G, that's why he's saying-
Oh, last week's G?
Oh, okay, so we're looking at the agenda. So you have a concern about the $7,000?
Yeah, looking at the agenda.
Got it, okay, so, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It seems like $7,000 is a lot of money to maintain one car. Actually, because here there's supposed to be two cars, then there ended up being three cars, then one car was a brand-new car, so it's only really maintaining an old car and another car. That's a lot of money to maintain a car, 7,000 bucks. And I can't figure it out, why would I vote to maintain a car for 7,000 bucks? What are they doing? They're repainting it, refixing it, changing the, oh, I know what they're doing, they're getting ready for NASCAR. They're putting a jet motor inside of it.
Okay, Counselor, come on. Any other counselors wish to speak on any of the matters pertaining to emergency management?
Well-
Okay, so we move to roll call?
Counselor Garcia?
No, it's one, I'm sorry, one, we're doing one vote for all four of these items.
All items pertaining to 911.
So on the agenda, it's-
So if you don't like one of them, you're gonna vote them all down then?
Correct, unless you'd like to-
If they don't get enough votes, they'll all vote it down, yeah, the whole thing. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Yeah. Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
Nine in favor, two opposed, motion adopted. Okay, we have the other items, how do you want to handle those?
One would be G. I asked for a roll call vote, but I also asked that there be amendment to that.
Counselor Brown, we're on F right now?
1,500.
Which would be the 1,500?
From free cash.
I'm sorry.
You want to vote on that one?
Yeah, I'll vote for 1,500.
1,500.
1,500, vote.
For your copy machine in the-
Legislative rent lease, that's the copy machine in the side room.
Actual roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero? Yes. Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. The next item before us is an order that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of $15,563 to supplement the fiscal year 2019 regional school account for student tuition.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I asked for amendment on this item here, there was a typo in, and if I could give you the amendment, and you can call a-
Please.
The amendment will be from free cash.
$15,563 from free cash?
$15,563.
From free cash?
From free cash, correct.
To supplement the fiscal year 2019 regional school account. Okay.
Roll call on, as amended?
Roll call as amended?
Yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. Okay, one, two, want to take the other three at one roll call?
I'll read them off.
I'll read them off. Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $250,000 from free cash to account chapter 90 of the transfer from the general fund. Order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, chapter 44, section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred FY 2018 were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY 19 budget. That the city council authorized expenditure of $415 from the Human Resource Department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid medical bill balance to professional health services from the prior year. And the final one, order that in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY 18 were not paid and are owed to the vendor, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from the current FY 19 budget, and the city council authorized the expenditure of $126.45 from the parking department expenditure line to satisfy the unpaid meter pot balance to McKay Meters, Inc., from a prior year.
Counselor Brown, roll call vote for all three.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I ask that we have a roll call vote on these items.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. Our final order under second readings is the acceptance of the $100 gift to the library.
Counselor Brown?
I have an actual roll call vote on this last item, please.
Okay.
Financial.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. That's all your financial orders under second readings.
Awesome. New business.
New business, first order under new business ordered introduced by Counselor Recupero. Adjusted income and interest limits for Chelsea, 41A, whereas Carmelita, Massachusetts has enacted clause 41A of Massachusetts General Law, chapter 59, section 5, to allow for senior homeowners 65 years of age or older to defer property taxes, and whereas the laws provide for municipalities to adjust both the income eligibility limits to qualify for the tax deferral program and the interest rate applicable to deferred taxes. And whereas the City of Chelsea City Council desires to take advantage of these adjustments to encourage participation in the tax deferral program by seniors, now therefore be it ordered that the City of Chelsea accept the provisions of General Law's chapter 59, section 5, clause 41A, which authorize the following, an increase in the gross receipts income eligibility limit from $20,000 to the maximum allowed by law, which is the income limit set by the Commissioner of Revenue for the purpose of subsection K of section 6 of chapter 62. The SEC will break a law, state income tax credit, for a single person who is not a head of the household, and two, a reduction in the interest charged by the city on all tax deferred from 8% to 4% simple interest annually, and that such changes be effective for tax deferrals granted for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2019.
Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objections.
Any objections? Okay.
Next order introduced by Counselor-
Do you want me to read it? Oh, you got it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Next order introduced by Counselor Recupero, whereas the Chelsea-
Roll call?
You need a roll call?
That's required, roll call is required on your-
Oh.
On this one?
On the one that you just adopted.
We just adopted under suspension. Okay, roll call. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted.
Okay, the next order of business introduced by Counselor Recupero, whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the City of Chelsea, whereas the City of Chelsea wishes to increase participation by seniors and veterans in the Senior Citizen Property Tax Workoff Program and the Veterans Property Tax Workoff Program by making more seniors and veterans eligible. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, as amended, be further amended as follows. An ordinance revising Part 2, Chapter 26 of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances. Amendment 1, that chapter 26, section 26-2 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts is hereby amended by striking in the first sentence of section 26-2A1 the words "income eligible." Amendment 2, that chapter 26, section 26-3 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts is hereby amended by striking entirely the existing section 26-3C3. These changes shall take effect as of January 1, 2020. Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt on the roll call vote.
Uh, roll call, would you mind speaking on it for the sake of the public?
Yes, 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 I will speak on it, I'm sorry, I should have told you what this was. This is-
I'd say-
This is a way for seniors and veterans-
Counselor, can you put the mic closer to, yeah, the microphone, closer to your mouth?
Closer to me?
Yes.
Okay, I thought I spoke loud enough. This is a program that helps seniors and veterans to come, if they wish to, work for the city and get some relief on their tax. The city had a limit, how much money they had to make, now, the other cities don't have this limit, so this city should be equal with the rest, and help out the seniors and the veterans. There's nothing wrong with trying to make a little better life for the seniors and veterans that live in our city, that wish to take some of the burden of the tax on them, and without being able, some of them wouldn't have been able to do it because there's an amount of money, how much they can earn. This one, it takes away the amount of money you can earn. Any senior veteran that wishes to do so, he can do it, if he wishes to, if he doesn't want to, he do, but at least it's as an opportunity for them to come and work for the city and try to help themselves if they can't afford to pay. Thank you.
Okay.
Roll call.
Okay.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Eleven in favor and not opposed, motion adopted. Order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that the city manager instruct the DPW director and assistant director Lou Mamalot to give an update on how and when they intend to fix the issue of the indentation in the road on Marginal and Hot Thon Street.
Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
This is concerning the portholes or the indentation that's on Marginal Street and it's coming up around that area in certain spots, like Park Street in front of that. Roca has the same problem where the indentations come in. So I would like to know, I know from a few years back, I was told that that issue is there because, one, the infrastructure about of it and the sewer system, and there's an issue with electricals there, too. That's why when they did the sidewalk, they couldn't finish fixing the sidewalk. So I would like to know how they intend to fix it and what to go about doing it. So that would be, that way I could have an answer to see when they're gonna fix it, and how's it gonna affect the people in that area, and to fix it, how they're gonna about fixing it. Thank you.
Okay.
Next order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that the city manager instructs DPW to fix all the holes from the corner of Fourth and Pearl Street all the way down to the corner of Pearl and Congress, and to give an update on when the road will be repaved and redone.
Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
I had a meeting before with the city manager about this section of the street, and he told me that one day when there was money, they were gonna try to fix it. It's a very important little piece, that's where the Pearl Street Apartments is, where the old senior people are, and that street is deplorable. I don't know when they're gonna do it, but I was told that they're gonna try to do it. So I'm trying to get, you know, a bearing, when are they gonna do it? Because old people are there, they should fix it, it shouldn't be like that.
Old people.
Thank you.
Last order from Counselor Recupero, order that the city manager put out a contract to open up competition for towing in Chelsea and get the lowest bidder.
Counselor Recupero?
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor.
This doesn't, this doesn't really matter, because what I was told, the city doesn't collect any money from these tow, towed things. And maybe it would be a good thing to have more competition among tow, tow people, they would treat the people better, maybe, when they start to tow, they would think, hey, I better treat that guy a little better before I make him feel bad, and, but it really doesn't matter because there's no money involved into this. There's no contractual, nothing to it.
Okay.
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 Order introduced by Counselor Lopez. Be hereby resolved that the city council sends the following to the Traffic and Parking Commission for adoption, amend section 7-27 of the article 7 of the Traffic and Parking Regulations, and add the following to section 8. Essex Street between Highland and Shertliff, Marbo Street between Highland and Shertliff, Carter Street between Sherman and Willow, Watts Street between Lynn and Willow, and Maverick Street between Shertliff and Highland.
Counselor Lopez?
I would like to adopt it unanimously and send it to the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Would you mind explaining what this is?
Yes, yes. I've been seeing so many 18-wheelers getting stuck in different narrow streets in, in my district, and also Sector 4, that starts from the police station down to garage. I always see that 18-wheelers do deliveries, like to corner stores, and they always get stuck, because the streets are very narrow, so I'm trying to see a way where we can avoid and not to let these 18-wheelers come to our narrow streets. Maybe if they can come a semi, semi-truck, but not a trailer 18-wheeler, because this is too long and too big.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Thank you. The section that Counselor Lopez is referring to is the list of streets that prohibits two and a half ton or more trucks, basically prohibiting traffic. However, my concern is not that he wants to add streets to it, my concern here is that we cannot order the Traffic Commission anything. I would kindly ask him to amend it just to say, if he can request that this item matter be on their agenda, and that then they can speak about it and he can lobby for these streets to be added. But we cannot order any of the boards or commissions to do anything, we can only ask them to have the agenda item on, on the meeting, for the meeting. So I think the wording of the actual order presented tonight is incorrect.
Okay, what do you suggest, Counselor Avizaneda?
So you want to amend it to request?
To request that this, that the subject matter be on, on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay. Counselor Recupero?
I can understand what my fellow counsel is saying, and I believe that we should look into, at least try to eliminate some of these big 18-wheelers parking all day long and taking up space. And it's a good idea what my fellow counsel wants to do, and I agree with Roy that we should check into it, too, and see how we can minimize these big tractor trailers going on our small streets.
Adopt that as amended?
Adopt that as amended? Under suspension?
Final order inter-
And sent to Traffic and Parking Commission, yeah.
Yeah. Final order introduced by Counselor Vido and Counselor Avizaneda, whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the City of Chelsea, whereas the City of Chelsea wishes to allow residents to utilize dockless electric bikes in order to meet their transportation needs. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, as amended, be further amended as follows. An ordinance revising Part 2, Chapter 16, Section 16-79 of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances. Amendment 1, that chapter 16, section 6, dash, 16, dash, 79 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Chelsea, Massachusetts is hereby amended as follows. A, by adding at the end of the second full paragraph the words "of electric-assisted bikes, as long as electric assistance does not exceed 15 miles per hour," and B, by adding at the end of the third full paragraph, a new sub-paragraph 5, which reads, "five electric-assisted bikes, as long as electric assistance does not exceed 15 miles per hour, and the electric assistance is not utilized while the bike is on the sidewalk." These changes shall take, shall take effect immediately.
Counselor Avizaneda?
As many residents know, and counselors know, we just ended the city-
I'm sorry, Counselor, what's your motion?
I'm sorry, motion to adopt on the suspension. Actually, on a roll call.
Roll call, roll call. Go ahead.
The, this motion, as, as I was trying, saying earlier, we know that the City of Chelsea has now finished its second year of having a bike-sharing program. The first year was a pilot program with OFU, second year was a bike-sharing program with Lime Bike, which we participated with, in collaboration with 16, I think, other communities as part of the MAPC. Lime Bike, Lime Bike has informed those PAC members that they are upgrading their fleet of bikes to electric bikes. These are bikes that would be giving some sort of assistance to some riders, and in order for that to, for them to be allowed in the streets of Chelsea, we currently do not allow this type of electric bike in our ordinances, so to continue the program and allow these bikes to be on the streets of Chelsea, we have to make a change in our ordinance, this ordinance reflects that. So I look forward to seeing them. I've actually taken a practice ride, and they're quite fun. Thank you.
Counselor Bishop? Okay.
Sorry, you have.
He objected to the first reading.
Sorry, you have before you.
All right, that's all we have, so, public announcements? Counselor Pilatanda?
So I got two things here, so just want the residents of Chelsea know that during off-hours, Monday through Friday, or on the weekends, if there's a porthole in the street or a sign is down, or there's a water main break and they can't get in touch with somebody at the local departments because we're shut down, to call their district council in that area or their council at large, because we all have phone numbers where we can get in touch with all department heads to get that fixed. And another important thing that I have here is tomorrow at the Senior Center on 10 Riley Way, Forbes Park is coming up again, I urge everyone to attend, along with some other things that are on the agenda there. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero?
I don't know if it's needed anymore for salt, but if it does need it, the salt is still open, you can still go and get it. I hope we don't need anymore, and if you do still need it, it's still open and you can pick it up.
Anybody else public, and Counselor Brown?
Just want to let folks know, I just got a notice today that Kamaya Therapeutic will be having a community meeting in Admirals Hill on March 21st. The meeting will take place at the Common Cove, which is at 305 Commonan's Way. It will be March 21st at 6:00 PM. They are looking to come out and talk to folks about a potential retail medical dispensary for marijuana, so that will be taking place up there. I want the residents of District 8 and the Admirals Hill area, Lower Beacon and Broadway to be aware of this. This notice should be in the paper on this coming Thursday. If you like information on this notice, please give me a call, or you can call the City Hall here, and we'll have a copy, we could have it mailed out to you, or we could have it emailed to you. So, residents of District 8, there will be a notice given for a community outreach meeting for a proposed adult-use marijuana facility on March, Thursday, March 21st at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public announcements, before we do moments of silence? An announcement, go ahead.
Sorry, meant to announce that the zoning board meeting tomorrow at the Senior Center is at 6:00 PM.
What's, what, is there a specific topic?
The zoning board for Forbes Street.
For Forbes, okay.
Yeah.
Also tomorrow, Wednesday at 5:00 PM is the Chelsea Black Community Event at the Williams School, please come, it was rescheduled from last month due to a storm, so please come out and support our community. Any other announcements? Moments of silence? Trina?
Trina Wilkinson, and also, um, Jill Lindahl, who passed away today, so.